Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. I'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to the first meeting of the new year. Today is January 4th, 2023. We'll begin this evening with an indication by Pastor Carol Fulton of Child, Children of Zion Outreach Ministry. Pastor Fulton, welcome.
Thank you. Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. First of all, giving honor and glory and thanking you for bringing us through 2022. We thank you, Father, for how you've kept our leadership, how you've kept our town and how you've protected us. And Father, on tonight, as we begin a new year, we're asking for your grace and your mercy. Father, we lift up the agenda tonight that, Father, that we ask for your wisdom on guidance on how, Father, we, our town should be run that will please you. Father, we give you honor and glory for all of those that are in leadership, the Alderman, the mayor, the fire department, the police, for all of those, Father, that have a say in our town. And Father, we pray for peace, we pray for wisdom, and we pray for guidance in your son, Jesus' name. And the people of God said, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Fulton. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you, may be seated. All right, we'll begin this evening with speakers from the floor. If there's someone who'd like to address the board on an issue that is not included on the agenda, this is the opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 1B, consideration of an interlocal agreement with Guilford County for the Colfax Fire District. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, you have the agreement in your packet. Last month, the board adopted the agreement with Colfax Fire Department to provide fire service coverage in that area and to assume the operations of their department. This agreement is one with Guilford County that basically will allow us to receive the fire tax for that district and to provide the coverage in Guilford County. So we have to have both of those since they are in Guilford County, their contract with Guilford County. We're basically assuming that contract to provide the same type of fire coverage that Colfax has provided through the years. Be glad to answer any questions. Chief Alderman is here as well. He may want to expand on what I said, but if not, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Do I have a motion?
No, ma'am.
We approve, Madam Mayor.
And Curtis, can we vote to approve both of them in one motion or do we need two separate motions?
I think one motion would be fine.
I have a motion to approve both agreements. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman J.R. Gorham.
Madam Mayor, who's getting credit for the motion?
It's Mr. Apple. All those in favor? Signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, item C. Consideration of an ordinance amending traffic schedule four to prohibit parking on a portion of Broad Street. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, we've had some requests from citizens that live on Broad Street. Parking on the street has became an issue. And once they get on both sides of the street, it comes narrow on that street. So we have before you an ordinance amending the traffic schedule. And it adds a portion of Broad Street to the list of no parking anytime. And it's on Broad Street, both sides of the street between East Mountain Street and Harmon Lane. So just if we do it on, in that section there on both sides of the street, hopefully that'll, that'll stop it and we won't have any more problems with it. But it, in the last few, probably the last six months or so, it's became more of a problem. You know, we, in the past, we've added and made it a four-way stop, kind of helped some safety issues on the, on the street. And we think now that adding it on both sides will, will help. It used to be just on the northwest side from Mountain Street down to about 300 feet from the intersection. So we're recommending both sides of the street now.
All right, are there any questions?
I have one, Madam Mayor. Curtis, so the residents that live on that stretch of the street, do they all have off-street parking that they can use? They're asking for it, I'm saying, so.
They do, yes. All of the houses on that street in that particular stretch there, all of them have off-street parking that is available. And I think it's what's happened is, you know, it's not necessarily the residents, but sometimes visitors. And they stay overnight or whatever, they, they'll park out in the street. And it, it does become crowded, like I say, especially on both sides of the street there.
Thank you, thank you.
I got a question. It says here that there's a resident that contacted, was it just one person complaining about it?
I think we've had, I know one contacted Keith and I've had one or two contact me. So, you know, it could have been the same one, but I think it's been at least two different ones and possibly three. And I think the one that contacted Keith is one that, that's a property owner there as opposed to a renter from somewhere. So we've, we've had two or three in the last six or seven months that have contacted us about it. And it, it could be, I think where the kind of the issue is, is pretty much a little bit closer up toward Mountain Street. And the problem is when the, sometimes when the folks are in the little row of office complex there, when they pull out, they can't see coming both ways and they'll pull out into Broad Street, whether they're going, you know, right or left. And then they, they pull out in front of oncoming traffic either way.
Well, it goes without saying that we have a lot more traffic on Broad Street now than we have in the past, correct?
Correct, yeah. And that's, that's led to some of the concerns, like I say, when you've got parking on both sides, people pulling in or out of the driveway. I know last year there was a truck that stayed there for about six or eight months and we finally just had to go. So look, you have to get it out or we're going to tow it. And it, the difficult part is pulling out of the driveways with the cars there. You have to pull out far enough and then you can't see what's coming.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions? Do I have a motion? Motion for approval by Alderman Penix.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. All right, item D. Is an ordinance to allow permit parking in municipal parking lots. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor, this goes back to when we adopted permitted parking here in the town hall parking lot. What we're asking for is at the very end of that, in the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, the last sentence says, "Any vehicles found in violation of this requirement are subject to be ticketed or towed at the vehicle owner's expense." Right now, ordinance only allows them to be ticketed. Just no big deal because it's only a $5 ticket. So we've got on the sign out here at Town Hall that you'll receive a ticket or you'll be towed. We would request that the board add the provision in there that we can tow them so that they just don't say, hey, I'll pay the $5 to park where I want to. It's not as a bigger problem here at Town Hall as what we could face that, you know, on some North Main Street in that parking lot. But it would only be right now for the town-owned public parking lots, which has been one on North Main, the one over here and the one over here. And it's if we've got it marked that you got to have a permit. So right now, that only applies to the parking lot here at Town Hall in the lower lot. So we're asking, and those where you have to have a permit, that we have the authority to tow those vehicles. And we wouldn't tell them first if we get a repeated offender. We would then tell them, hey, look, next time we've given you X number of tickets, we're going to tow your vehicle. In addition to this, we will bring to you at some point the request to raise the parking fine from $5 probably to 50. It's what we ran into and we've been dealing with it for what, last six months? Last six months or so. We have some individuals on North Main that will park. And again, it's only a $5 fine and they're like, I pay the $5 every day. So it's what we ran into is they just pay the $5. There's really no teeth in our ordinance, it's just a $5 fine. Well, if you don't pay it, no big deal. So what we have to do is wait for it to accrue to where it's enough that they owe us enough to take them to magistrate, small claims court. So we're going to ask that we raise the fine probably to $50 and, and put in there that it's a class two or three misdemeanor as well. But that's another ordinance that will be coming in problem in the next month or two. But tonight, we're just asking that in permitted parking spaces that, if they don't have a permit, that we can't tow.
Do fines go to the school system?
No, I think we keep those fines though, yeah. And it's not been a real big issue, it's been more of an issue in the last six months to a year, especially with the on-street parking than it's ever been in the past. But we're seeing it in different places, especially on-street parking. For the fine with this, you know, like I say, with this, what we're, what we are requesting tonight is just in permitted parking lots that if we have a repeated offender, we can tow the vehicle.
I got a question. It's not public parking if you have to have a permit?
That's correct. Yep.
So we're going to change public parking lots into permitted lots, right?
The ordinance gives authority to do that and we have on this one. Down here, that's the only one we've got, the one we changed so that the folks with the school could park down here. We did it by permit only because they needed really all the spaces in that lower lot. But that's the only one we changed to a permitted lot. And really, we don't anticipate changing anymore to a permitted lot.
But this allows you to do it to any public lot that says, right?
It says, "Public off-street parking lots is having such a permit requirement." And so it'd be just the ones that are public off-street lots that have a permit requirement. And we don't have any, like I say, the only one we have right now is one here at Town Hall.
What about that million-dollar lot we, we were on Cherry Street, y'all getting ready to build?
We don't anticipate it being a permitted lot.
You would agree that's bad for business.
Yeah, if you have to have a permit, yeah. Well, it, it depends. I mean, it's bad for business, but it could be good for business, it generates some revenue, you can sell permits, but.
I got you.
Depends on which way of the business you're looking at there.
You said what I'm, you said.
Yeah, but no, we don't anticipate making it a.
What are we going to charge for these permits?
We didn't charge anything for these. We, and the only reason we made it permit was so that we wouldn't be using all the rest of the parking lot here at Town Hall. So we've got 42 spaces, I think. And so the school, the Hooker Building, says we need 40-some spaces. So to ensure that they could park there and we wouldn't have them parking in all the other public parking lots, we made that lower lot by permit only. We got a sign up that says parking by permit only.
So they can buy permits, right?
They can get, we gave them to them, we didn't charge. Yeah. And we, we would only, we only issued those to the school. We wouldn't issue them to anyone else. What we did was we gave the permits to the lady that's in charge of the school. She gave them out to the folks as part of their tuition that were willing to take a reduction on their tuition and park here. So we didn't charge anything. We just, we just did it by permits so that we could, number one, ensure that, you know, they didn't fill up all the spaces down here and then the folks from the institute park everywhere else. Okay. And so far, it's, you know, it's worked pretty good. But our main concern was days, really were court days. When we have 200 cases in court or 150, all those folks get here and park. And then the folks from the school don't have anywhere to park and then they line up here or they go back up to the lot on North Main. So to solve that, we issued those folks permits and then marked that as permitted lot.
Thank you, Curtis.
Curtis, can you give us an update on our, sort of our voluntary good neighbor policy about the parking lot behind Ellington Jewelers and the barber shop?
Yeah, I've been checking it, trying to check it, you know, they were out for about two weeks for Christmas break at the school. But before that, when we opened up over here and started letting them use this lot, I'd kind of keep eye on that one. And so far, you know, knock on wood, it's worked well. The lot on North Main is, has had plenty of empty spaces. It had some empty spaces during Christmas season for those folks to come in and shop. You know, I went by there one day, I think Ed and I rode through there one day around lunchtime. I think, I forget how many spaces is in there, about, about 47 in total, I think. And most of them were full with just the people that, you know, when you take into account, you've probably got 15 businesses. And they have their employees parked there. They take up about all but 15 spaces. So really, you only have 15 spaces left after the employees. But there were plenty of vacant spaces the times I've been by. So, so far, it's working. The folks have been parking here. They've been, they put the permit on their dashboard, they park down in the lower lot. They don't, we've not noticed them parking all over the lots. I have seen them. She also, I think, is renting a lot from Muston and Crutchfields. Rented by there, they've had probably 15 cars or so in their lot. So it's working right now. Guessing she's started a new semester, but I've noticed that the lot here has, has been occupied pretty good in the mornings. She has a bigger class in the morning than the afternoon. But so far, it's, it's been vacant up on North Main like we kind of hoped it would. So seems to be working right now. And right now, it's not been an issue with court classes in the PD. I don't know that they've had any big classes yet where we ran out of parking. We've had plenty of parking so far. So seems to be working pretty good right now.
Curtis, I checked back with Bruce Ellington just to be, see how things were going during their Thanksgiving to Christmas season. And he was very pleased. He said that people seemed to be cooperating very well. So again, I want to congratulate you and the chief for working out an arrangement that just was the way we'd do it, I think. So thank you.
Yeah, and what we, what we've got to keep an eye on now is when the homeschool folks, if they come back, start using the church, kind of see where they park. But I think they're coming back next week maybe. So I'm going to try to get by the church and talk to them before then so that they won't fill back up the other lot.
Are you going to give the church the permits? Maybe it's for their homeschool people?
I don't think so because honestly, the church has enough parking behind the church that the times I've been through the church, because I'll ride through there when I would come out North Main, their lot was empty. So I'm, I'm not real sure why they were telling their folks to park over in the public parking lot to begin with. But we don't have enough really with the permits that we gave here. We used all of the spaces for the, for the schools. So there probably wouldn't be enough unless there are staggered times. Wouldn't be enough probably to do it. But like I say, they've got enough spaces at the church, I think, to accommodate what they use. I think maybe the church may rent or lease some of their space during the day to, not Highland Industries, but what used to be Island Tech, Tech or whoever it is. So, you know, I have to see how that works. But I don't think we have enough spaces unless the school's not using all of them to, to permit very many more. But if it's available, it's what I would do if they, you know, if they just need five or 10. I'll get back with the lady at the school and see if she's using all 42 of hers. And if she's not, then we may switch some over to the homeschool folks.
Cool, thank you, Curtis.
Is there further discussion or are we ready to have a vote?
I'd move approval, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Apple.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Thompson. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. The vote is unanimous. All right, we are to item E. The amended agreement with Paul J. Senior Botanic Garden.
Mayor, board on page two of the agreement under Roman numer one, the third paragraph, we amended this agreement to include the sentence of, basically it is, it says, "It is the hope of the parties that the garden remain a public garden in perpetuity. However, if after a minimum of seven years from the date of transfer, the town determines that due to unanticipated circumstances, the garden is no longer a benefit to the public or reasonably sustainably, sustainable financially, the town may, after informing PJCBG, either repurpose a garden for another suitable governmental use or sell the real and personal property of the garden for the benefit of the citizens of Kernersville." They have, if the town wishes to sell the real and personal property of the garden after seven years from the date of transfer, PJCBG shall have the right of first refusal to purchase a real property for an amount that is equal to the fair market value of the property at the time. So the only change there is we added the seven-year clause. Initially, it was not seven years. We added the seven-year clause in the agreement that suited the Attorney General, who had to approve the agreement and transfer of assets. So we've added that. Everything else remains the same. They had the right of first refusal as it was to begin with. So that's not changed at all, it's just reworded that sentence. But the only part that has changed is that it will remain a garden for seven years. I think it was in ten of the board for it to remain a garden that long anyway. But the Attorney General's office did want clarification on how long it would remain a garden. So that's the only change. They did reword the first paragraph under Roman numer two about if, it's actually not that one, it's the paragraph where it talks about if it's no longer a garden, then we don't have a seat on the board. Which is, you know, it's kind of common sense there. If it's not a garden, they don't have a board for us to have a seat on. And it's actually, it is under Roman numer two, where it says, "In the event that the town fails to operate the garden," as Paul J. Senior Botanical Garden is described in section one above, PJCBG shall have the option to revise its bylaws or remove any town appointments to a board of directors. It said that in the first agreement. It was just in a, in a separate paragraph, they combined it all into one. So nothing really has changed except for we did define that it would remain a garden for seven years.
Is there any discussion or do I have a motion?
I've got a question real quick, please, Madam Mayor. I was recused from this vote originally. I know that this has already been passed, this is an amendment. Do I need to recuse myself from this as well?
I think it would be a good idea.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to recuse Alderman Thompson?
Sure.
There are motion by Mayor Pro Tem Apple. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. All those in favor?
Am I okay to stay here? Would you rather me sit on the side?
You have to step to the side. Did you vote to recuse yourself? I think you can. Okay, it's unanimous. It's a well-timed question, Mr. Thompson, thank you. All right, is there any further discussion, questions or comments before we take a vote?
Madam Mayor, I just would ask Curtis, maybe and Ed confirm that folks who are in the audience and who are watching online may not exactly understand why the Attorney General will get involved with an agreement that has to do with the town and the gardens. And Ed, that may be something you may want to address for us if you don't mind.
Nonprofit corporations are regulated by the Attorney General in the public interest. And so they look at any time there are sale or disposition assets to make sure that they're disposed of in a proper manner in the public interest. And that's, that's the reason for that.
And my understanding is too, that they want to be sure that, that donors.
Are protected with their identities and things like that.
Yeah, I think that's important for.
Yes.
The general public to understand.
Absolutely.
It's a good safeguard. It's a good safeguard.
Yes.
Good point, Mr. Apple. Got a motion for approval from Alderman Penix, second? Second by Alderman Barra. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. You may return to the board, Mr. Thompson. All right, the next item on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of the purchase of real property. This is property located at the address 6310 Old Valley School Road. Mr. Swisher?
Madam Mayor and board, we discussed this last month and you can see on the overhead there, the property is right in front of Kernersville Lake, New Kernersville Lake Park on Old Valley School Road. You can see the lake. The part about where the arrow is, is our dam. It's the berm there of the dam and then the property is two parcels. It's the parcel in blue and then the one where the yellow dot is. The yellow dot is actually the house that's on the property. The heirs approached the town, asked if we would be interested in buying the property. The board expressed interest in having the property appraised and seeing what it came back for. The property came back, the appraisal on the property, it's right at six acres. The big tract is 5.45 acres and the other tract is, or it's 5.54 something. And then the other one's like .47. So it's right at six acres. It came back, $250,000 was the appraised value of it. That includes the house. The town doesn't really need the house, but when it's appraised, we have to appraise it with the house on it. You know, the property, it goes over, Catherine, can you click also and see kind of where it goes to? Yeah, it goes over just about to the driveway of the park. That portion of the property in there is, is in a floodplain. You would be hard-pressed to use that property really for anything. The, there is a possibility where the house sits to the left over near Mick Mack Trail, from the house over to Mick Mack Trail. Kind of sets us up on a little bit higher elevation there, out of the floodplain. It's a possibility if, if the board wanted to in the future, if the board votes to buy the property and then at some point in the future, go in and slice that part off of it. Because it's out of, kind of out of the path of the dam, if the dam were to break. You could probably go in and cut that part off. You can get at least two lots that face Mick Mack Trail. Probably get two lots that face Mick Mack and one that faces Old Valley School Road if they all perk. We, we've not done a perk test on it, so I couldn't tell you whether they all perk or not. So the lot, you know, the six acres, we, we might could use it for something down the road. Wouldn't anticipate using it right now. The good thing is it is six acres right in front of the dam. As you all know, we just did some work on the dam. So it gives us a little bit better in the future if we need to go in and do some things to the dam or somehow expand the dam or whatever. We have the property there to do that. That would be probably the main use for it at some point in the future as opposed to something involving partial recreation. I don't know that we would really use it for that, but not saying we wouldn't. We just wouldn't anytime soon probably. So, you know, it would give us some kind of a buffer there between the dam and any, any residences along there. That's the only house in, right in front of the dam. So we would have that house. And like I say, if we needed to go in at some point and do some work on the dam on that side, we would have the property there to do it. So be glad to answer any questions you might have. I have talked to the heirs, told them it would be on the, on the agenda for tonight. And I would let them know if the board decided one way or the other to do something with the property.
What would be your, your recommendation, Curtis, as to the appropriate action on the part of the dam?
Well, I mean, you know, again, I don't think we'd go in and use it for anything right away, but it's probably not a bad idea to own the property. Hopefully, we wouldn't need it anytime soon for the dam either. But again, it is right in front of a dam, right at the lake. So it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be a terrible idea to own the property. I don't, you know, we might could do something with it down the road. We don't, we don't operate that park. The county operates it, we own it, the county operates it. But we're still responsible for, for the dam itself. Because when we had to do repairs, we, we had to bear the cost. we, we had to bear the cost of those repairs. You know, I would say if the board does buy it, we could certainly look at possibly if those two lots along Mick Mack Trail. Again, I think they're out of the path if the dam or something were to happen and it flood, they're up high enough out of the path, you know, we could look at selling possibly two of the lots and recovering some of what, what the town paid for the property. But, you know, years down the road, you might need it and may not be available to get other than through condemnation. So, you know, that, have the opportunity to get it now and not have to go through that down the road. Hopefully, you know, hopefully this is a piece that we never really need, but it's kind of one of those, if you needed it, kind of be nice to have it.
Can you clarify, did you say the appraisal was for the house and the land?
Yeah, the house and the land was 250.
We don't really need the house, correct?
No, but they're going to sell it as-
Sure. Turn around and sell the house parcel off of it.
Yeah, you, you might could go in, you know, you'd have to kind of see what you could do. You might could go in and cut the parcel kind of at an angle and start with the house and go over toward Mick Mack and sell the house and then two more lots. You might could do that. We would need to kind of look at it and probably have to go in, survey and cut it off differently. You know, it's possible, and again, I didn't, we didn't check for perks, see what perks and what doesn't. But it's possible the reason they put the house where they put it is because that was the only place they could put it. So I don't, I don't know about the, you know, usability of the other part of that parcel up near Mick Mack Trail. I don't know.
But the house is not currently occupied?
No, it is not. And the house needs some work. I mean, if, if, you know, if we wanted to do something with the house, we're looking at some significant expenditures on the house probably. Now, I was going to look and see, I can't remember if they gave a value for just the house by itself. I think he just gave a value actually of the, of the whole parcel and didn't break the house down. Yeah, I don't, I don't see the house broken down by itself. I'm gonna let you look at it, Chris. If you want to look at it, you can probably tell faster than I can. You do them all the time.
What are you looking for?
I was looking to see if he gave an actual value for just the house, but I don't believe he did.
Should be a section there for the improvement.
Yeah, they usually-
The assessed value is 157,000 on just the house. That's the assessed value.
They did have it priced originally at 350,000 and they dropped it to 319. And I don't think they have lowered it any more since then.
My only concern is buying property with a house and then if we're not going to, clearly we're not going to rent the house, but then we're going to have a liability of the house.
We would-
Need a repair, then it needs to be torn down, which is another cost.
We would probably tear the house down.
Correct.
Yeah. I don't see just, I don't see just the value of the house.
If you have the appraisal, it's probably not in the appraisal.
Yeah, it's, I don't see it. Yeah, he's got opinion of site value, dwelling 1,328 square feet, square foot at zero dollars. So he didn't put a, he didn't put a value of just the house.
So do we think they will accept the appraised value? Do we have any indication?
When I spoke to them, I, I told them that, that we, I did not think the board would be willing to pay any more than appraised value for it. That usually the way it works is we get it appraised, I present that appraisal to the board and then they either make an offer or don't make an offer. But very rarely do we go over appraised value because really there's not any need to because you do have the power of condemnation if you need to and you can go in at that point condemn it and get it for appraised value. The risk you run in that is you usually go out and get three, three appraisals and throw out the high, throw out the low and take the middle. And then you end up in court when they don't agree with it. So sometimes in some circumstances, you would pay a little more than appraised value, but not, this would not be one of those circumstances. We don't need the property right now to, to pay more, but I would recommend, you know, at least the appraised value if you're so inclined to purchase it.
What it costs to tear the house down, all of that away?
The last one that we had torn down was a house about half that size. And it was about, Don, do you remember what it cost to tear that one down on Edgewood Street? Wasn't it like 6,000 or something? So I'm figuring probably to tear it down, all it off, house that size, 10, 11 maybe? I don't know how much that, you got any idea what that cost to work to have something like that done? Has it increased significantly? Yeah. So you're looking around about 15.
Any asbestos to remediate or have y'all looked at that? That's very expensive.
I didn't, it is, yeah. The way you have to get rid of it, I didn't see any in the appraisal. And sometimes they will note that, but you know, he probably wasn't looking for that. It doesn't look like it has any, but John, to be honest with you, I, you know, couldn't tell you for sure, but probably not, I wouldn't think it has any because the house is-
Chris says not because it's a newer house.
Yeah, I was going to say the house is not that old, so it probably doesn't have any asbestos in it. And if it does, you're right, it is, the way they have to dispose of that is not cheap.
So if I'm hearing this right, this is something that we don't necessarily need. Not only the reason that we'll be looking at this is because it was an opportunity by this property. And I'm just kind of thinking in my mind is at the best use of our taxpayer money in this situation is-
And, and that's, you're correct in what you indicated. I mean, we don't, we don't need it from the sense that we're going out there tomorrow and do anything with it. I mean, I'm, you know, we wouldn't go out and make it an amenity to the park or anything like that. It's more of a, it's not a liability, but it kind of helps eliminate a little about, little liability that we have with it being right in front of the dam. Honestly, if it wasn't right in front of the dam, probably tell you, I wouldn't even consider buying it. But with it, where it's located, right in front of that dam, right next to the road, at some point in the future, it might, you know, it might be, save you some, might save you some headache. But it's not something that, it's not something that I anticipate the town using as an active park anytime soon.
Curtis, having served as an alderman, when a lot of issues came up about the Century Park Dam and as town manager being involved in issues with dams around town, do you have any comments based on your experience to, whether it's handy or not handy to have land adjacent to a road in a dam?
Well, in this case, you know, unlike Century Park's dam, the road doesn't go across it. So we're, you know, we've, we've got some help there. The road doesn't go across the dam like it did at Century Park. But it could in the future, you know, again, depending on what happened with the dam, if you ever have to go in and, you know, if the dam is, is leaking or you've got some issues with the dam and you say, you know, we've had enough, we're not going to spend a million dollars or more to fix this dam. You would have the opportunity there with that land, I think, to go in and be able to maybe breach the dam and, and then let the water out. We discussed that with Century Lake. And the only reason we didn't do it is because we would have had to cul-de-sac the road on each side of the, basically the dam there, we'd had to cul-de-sac the road. So if something like that came about, you know, at that time you would own the land and be able to do that. Now, whether or not that would be an option at some point down the road, I don't know. But, you know, if it is, you've got the land there to do it because it is, like I say, it's right, you're right next to the dam. Spillway comes one way, dam goes the other way. You know, you hope you never have any issues with the dam, but I can tell you from years and years of looking at dams, there's very few of them that you don't have an issue with at some point in time. I think Ed, y'all had one in Yakima that you finally breached, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, you hope you never have to do that with this one because it is a park around the lake. But, you know, that was a consideration when we were dealing with Century Park because it did cost, what, Don, that was a little over a million dollars to do that, wasn't it? Yeah, I think it was like 1.2 million back then. You know, so you never know. But again, this was a little different in the fact that the road is not near the dam and, but you still face the same issues if something happens with the dam. We did just have it repaired. It was leaking, so we did have that repaired, but, you know, I can't tell you that something else won't come up with it in, in years to come.
Do we have, do we have access to it to repair it, whether we own this tract or not?
We do. We have access, pretty good access to it. The only way we would need to, to really use this property is if for some reason we had to go in and widen out the dam, widen out the footer of it and all of that, then you may get on this property. Because there's a, we've got an access road that goes in, goes over the dam. We can get down to the foot of the dam right up against this property. So we can get in, do what we need to do, but if at some point in the future we needed to increase that area, then, you know, we might need the property at that time.
There's a reason why they come to us, asking us to buy this property. It probably, it's probably not a hot deal on the real estate market and property values out there probably not increasing that well. So if it's something that we don't need right now, you know, I'm thinking, why purchase it now? If there becomes a need for us to purchase at a later date, I'm quite sure that if we approached them, they would probably go along with whatever offer we have at that time if we have a need for it. I'm just kind of, I'm just having a hard time buying this property right now when we don't have an immediate need for it, when we could use those funds to do something else in the town of Kernersville. And I feel pretty good that if we did have a need for it down the road, that we probably still could get access to it. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, and you, you're right. You can, if it came down the road and there was something really wrong with the dam and we had to get in there, we, again, we, we can use the condemnation and go in and get what we need. So that, that option is, is there. Depending on the situation, you, you can, might get in there pretty quickly or might go through the process, but if it was something with the dam, you could probably get in there fairly quickly.
Can, can we put up the flood zone flood map on this, please?
And I don't, I think you're right too, Alderman Gorham. I don't think they've had a lot of activity on it because they priced it as if it were six usable acres and they've really got about a, maybe an acre of that's usable and it's the part up near Mick Mack Trail.
The flood zone layers that I have, that I see show everything below the pond in the flood zone. So everywhere that, if, let's just say the dam failed miserably, it's not like there's ever going to be a house in that whole area that we're going to have to speak with someone about driving on their land to repair the dam because it's in the flood zone. And I hate to see us pay that much money for all that land that's in the flood zone when if we really need to repair it, nobody's going to build anything in there anyway and we're still going to build and repair it.
Yeah, you would just have to, might have to come across our properties, parts you can get on it. But you're correct, everything from the pond below is, is in the floodplain.
It's not usable anyway.
The actual backyard of the house, the parcel there on the left, you know, a little bit of it's probably in the floodplain, it just doesn't show up. So, you know, I don't know, something happened with the dam, I don't think it would get up to the house. That's why I say you could probably sell the house and other lots in there if they, if they perk. But you're right, the whole lower part there, as you can see, is in the floodplain and that's kind of the, you know, that's where the spillway goes, where the dam goes. You know, the only time you would, I think, would be if you go in and needed to increase the size of the, of the dam at some point or something like that, which again, at that point, if you needed to get in there, you could use a condemnation, go in and do it or, you know, if they're smart, they just sell you their floodplain property at that time.
Which would be a whole lot cheaper than 256,000 in a rundown house.
Possibly, yeah. But they, they won't build anything in there for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, he's got a, some kind of outdoor shed, pretty good sized shed and some other things in there that I'm sure some point in time they've probably flooded out. Yeah, the part there that's kind of yellow, that's about where his sheds and cars and everything are. So it must just be right on the edge, kind of the edge of the floodplain.
Yeah, based on that, I'm in agreeance with JR. I know that this is the smartest move for us to make right now when we really don't need it.
I agree with that as well. Madam Mayor, do we need a motion not to acquire, not to accept the offer?
Okay. I mean, actually, if you, if you'll make one that way and take it back to the, take it back to the-
I'd make a motion that we not accept the offer at this time.
Has there actually been an offer, like, do you have that phrase right?
That we not acquire the property-
Yeah, we just had it appraised.
At, at any price right now.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mayor Pretem Apple. Do you want to repeat your motion so that everyone hears it?
Yes, ma'am. I think my motion, unless advised, it's imprudent, would be that we not acquire the motion at this, I'm not acquire the property at this time for any price. If something comes forward that we believe would be extraordinarily advantageous, that can come back to us. And my motion would be that we not acquire the property at any price at this time.
I've got a motion by Mayor Pretem Apple. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, next we have the consent agenda. These matters are considered to be routine by the Board of Aldermen and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the matter will be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the following item. A, approval of minutes for the November 30 regular meeting. B, approval of minutes for the December 6 regular meeting. C, approval of corrected version of ordinance. O, 2020 15, to reflect the zoning jurisdiction conversion from Forsyth County to Kernersville. And D, Forsyth County tax refund. So anyone, staff or citizens in the audience who'd like to see any of these items removed? Seeing none, is there any aldermen who'd like to see any of these items removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Thompson?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, we are now to item four, which is the briefing on the January 10 meeting agenda. Okay, 1A is a annexation petition, Ms. Garner.
This will be the public hearing for the Kerner Road annexation with the revised plat of just the land for the subdivision.
Okay, item B is another annexation petition.
This is for the recently acquired property at Ivy Redmond Park.
Does anyone have a question on either of those items? All right, the next public hearing is on the proposed financing of the construction of the Recreation and Events Center- on the proposed financing of the construction of the Recreation and Events Center and paving improvements on various town-owned streets. I do not see Mr. Page is here, so Mr. Swisher?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as it says, this is a proposed financing mainly for the Recreation and Events Center and also the paving that was approved in the budget. We have not received those bids back from the bank yet. I think they're due Friday at four P M., so as soon as we get those back, uh, we will load those onto the agenda.
Okay. So I don't think the aldermen can have any questions because we don't have the bids back, but are there any questions other than that?
If it's a tough one, I'm not gonna be able to answer it because I haven't seen the bids.
So, um, you think they'll be loaded Friday?
They're due Friday at four, is that correct, France? So we'll load it soon as we get them in and, and review them. It'll either be Friday or Monday morning early.
Okay, I'd like everyone to have a chance to look at it before we come to the meeting. Okay. All right. Item two B is a resolution setting the date for a voluntary annexation petition for property located at seventy-five zero one Watkins Ford Road, containing one point five four three acres. Ms. Garner?
You may recall a rezoning petition from two thousand and twenty-two about Atkins Farm. This was by David Michaels in Windsor Homes. They've acquired a piece between their, their previously rezoned parcel and Watkins Ford Road, which will allow them to realign the entrance to better meet up with Watkins Ford Road. Um, so they are pursuing a rezoning and annexation on that parcel and a revision to their master plan.
Okay, any questions? All right, item C is a budget amendment, budget amendment number six. Mr. Swisher?
That is, some of that budget amendment is dependent upon the bids that come in. So as soon as we get those bids in, can finalize budget amendment, we will load it up as well.
All right, and then item D is also about the rec center.
We have that contract. We got it last night. We're reviewing it, so we should be able to get it loaded up on Friday.
Okay, and E would also be related to the Parks and Rec building?
E and F both, um, and they're both dependent on the bids coming in. Basically, we submit the application to L G C. We kind of have to know who it's financed with. That's item F, and then E is intent to reimburse, kind of need to know what we're reimbursing, so.
Seeing a pattern here that the agenda may dramatically change if the bids don't come in.
If the bids don't come in, there's going to be a lot dramatically changed.
Okay.
All of those will go away, and then we're gonna drop back to punt and figure out how we're gonna build the Parks and Rec bill. So, yeah, we're, we're kind of waiting.
All right, item three is a consent agenda. There's closed session minutes, so I think they were, Mr. Hooker, have you handed those out to everyone?
Yes.
So take it, an opportunity to read this before our next meeting. All right, item C, D, E, F, G, H, and I are all related to requests by the Kernersville Chamber of Commerce for various events. Do you have any comments on any of those, Mr. Swisher?
No, these are items that we do every year. A lot of them are road closures. We're gonna go ahead and get those done up front this year and get them in the, on the books. Nothing out of the ordinary for any of them. It's ones that, I think all of them, with the exception of the Veterans Day Parade, are events that have taken place in the past, and the road closures are the same as they have been in the road previous years.
Okay. And then items that you'll present at the meeting?
I have two items, uh, that will be under the Town Manager's Report, and both of those relate to, uh, trucks, garbage trucks and public services. One of them will be, or they're both actually will be in tents to purchase. We need the board to approve that so that we can order the trucks. Something comes in or something comes up and we don't want to purchase them, you know, I have to purchase them, um, they'll just sell them. We've done that in the past because it takes so long to get the trucks. But we need the board to adopt that intent to purchase. It'd be for two trucks. Uh, one of them is, is one that is coming off lease in March of, was it March of this year? So we need to go ahead with that one so that we'll have that truck still in service, and the other one is to replace the truck that was. So I have that, have a memo in the packet, uh, relating to those two matters, be loaded up probably tomorrow. And that's right now all I know that I'll have for, uh, Tuesday.
Mr. Powell, do you plan to have items to present at the meeting on Tuesday night?
Um, subject to some of the items that we discussed previously, there may be discussion concerning some of those, but none, none other than that.
Okay, thank you. All right, that is the meeting for Tuesday. Any questions or any other comments, Mr. Swisher? Any questions by any of the board? All right, that brings us back to tonight. Which is the Town Manager's Report this evening.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
I don't have a report, but we do have need for a closed session.
Okay, thank you. All right, matters to be presented this evening by the mayor and board of aldermen. I'll, I'll start with Mr. Thompson.
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow?
I have a little something. I would just like to address the board and thank them for, uh, working with me last year. And I believe I communicated with everybody about how interesting that was to be on the outside looking in and now be on the inside looking out. It's very different. I look forward to a very productive year this year, and, uh, again, just thank everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. Mr. Apple?
Mayor, I just echo what Mr. Barrow said, but I wonder if he's implying that it was not interested watching him learn with the rest of us as well. No, I, it was a great time. We have a great, a great board. I think we have a great chemistry among members of our board, and we have a lot of diverse opinions about things that we do. So I think that makes it a strong board, and I think the fact that we can all remain good friends and, and act like family is a real asset to the town, and I thank you for allowing me to be a part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Apple. Mr. Gorham?
Uh, yes, as a new member, board member, I'd like to echo what's been said by my, uh, uh, cohorts here in crime, or how you want to see it sometimes. But yes, it's been a very great experience of being, uh, a board member here in Kernersville, and being given the opportunity by the citizens here of Kernersville to allow me the opportunity to come and represent them, uh, from my, my background and my experiences in life, and, uh, yeah, I think we've got a good thing going here. We, uh, we can be, uh, we can disagree without being disagreeable, and it's always a plus when you have a organization of this caliber, uh, because that's what democracy's all about, and I salute us collectively for the job that we've done thus far. So everybody give yourself a pat on the back, and I'm sure everybody started the new year's off on the right foot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorham. Mr. Penix?
Well, I'd, I'd like to welcome the three new members. I think they've, uh, blended into our town government wonderfully. We've got, already, we've got great chemistry. I think if the federal government used the Board of Aldermen, the town of Kernersville for a role model, they'd be a lot better off. So I welcome all of you. I'm, I'm glad to have all three of you on our board, and, and Chris too.
Thank you, Mr. Penix. It's an honor to serve the citizens, and it's an honor to serve with this fine group of aldermen, so to echo the, the responses, and we had a lot going on in two thousand and twenty-two. It's been one of the busiest years for accomplishments of, um, the Board of Aldermen in, in recent memory, so there's a lot that we've achieved and a lot to be proud of. The Paul J. Seener Botanical Garden agreement to, to bring that into the town and to preserve it for the future, the steps we've taken to ensure a rec center that will serve all the citizens. And there's many more, but, um, it's just been a tremendous, two thousand and twenty-two was a tremendous year. So I look forward to serving with you all in two thousand and twenty-three. And, uh, we've got our community development department, as of the end of two thousand and twenty-two, fully staffed again. And we've got, uh, some great town leadership, great town manager, town attorney, and some great department heads leading a tremendous staff, so um, we're ready for the new year and the new challenges that we don't necessarily know what a new year will bring. Certainly, uh, there's been some years in the past that had unexpected challenges arise in the, the middle of the year, but we'll keep working with the civic groups, the Chamber of Commerce, our nonprofits, and each other to, uh, strengthen this community and make the best it can be. So, but we're not done tonight because we do have a closed session, as Mr. Powell has reminded us, so can I have a motion for a closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A three, I move that the board go into closed session to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A five to discuss the possible acquisition of real property.
I have a motion. Is there a second? A second by Alderman Thompson. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. This meeting is now in closed session. Welcome back to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Is there any further business before the board this evening? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Alderman Thompson. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Barrow. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.